But now.
Adrian, you ready? Okay. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Let's give our new town manager, Aaron Houdrea, a nice warm welcome. All councilors are present. I'd like to ask only lead us in prayer.
We pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy, and happy. We pray for wisdom for all those who guide and govern. Help this government body in every situation, to know and to do the things that are right and just, the soundness of judgment-making by the decisions. We pray for peace makers, that the Holy Life, different spirits, never dwell in hearts, and the barriers of fear, suspicion, and hatred may fall. This we pray to the Holy Father. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, public comment period. See, we've got a special guest here on the docket tonight.
Yes, sir.
I think take the stage.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm Ryan Pelletier. I'm the county administrator. With me tonight is Paul Leatherwood. Paul is the county commissioner in District Two. He lives in dress smile, but he's also the chair of the majority county commissioner. So, Fort Fairfield actually called it District One because of the way the districts were laid out. But Paul is recently coming in today representing the retired work commissioner. So, appreciate that. I was asked to come inside, talk a little bit about the county budget and the county operations for you to maybe explain a little bit about areas some of the funds go through in county taxes. And so, I'm not used to this system, so it can be a little great if I have to. So, this is in general. County government is there's always form of government. It's actually the only form of regional government where officials are directly elected by the orders. Usually, in the sixteen counties, you have either a three, five, or seven-member county commissioner. Here in Rustic, we've got three members. County commissioners are the chief elected officials. They're responsible for fiscal operations and policy decisions in the county. Some things that they do directly involve with the local government is they hear taxation appeals, so with a property order that appeals their property taxes, so to you. We deny it, they have the right to appeal that to the commissioners. So, that's something that they do. We also hear hearings on A, this is how roads. We probably do two or three taxation appeals a year. The road appeals are really rare. I've been the county commissioner for years. I think we've done one since I've been here. I think Paul's been on the board for over twenty-five years, so I think maybe we've done two at a time. Three, so they're really rare. And what that is, is if a three-year-old resident's petition, the commissioners can look at the status of the townway. If it's not being kept up to a certain standard, the commissioners can interfere and make a decision on it. Very rare. Here in Rustic County, I'm assuming three commissioners on four-year terms. They each represent a geographic district. State statute requires that every ten years we re-districting, similar to how what seven districts put the portion. Generally, those are in the south, central, and northern part of the county. However, as I mentioned earlier, just because of the way the geography and the population work, District One, which Commissioner Woodson told me, his district stakes up along Route One, Route One and up through One A, right? Up through here into One, so. Commissioners are called the county commissioners. They confirm the department heads, the advisory boards, just like the budget process. So, similar to being on a severe town press. Here we have the three commissioners, Phil Gobbins down in Oldham, Paul, the secretary of state, and Dan Rowe, who represents the northern part of the district, which is certification. Covers all the St. John Valley and down to the porch. Something that's a little different in county government as compared to municipal government is a lot of the department heads themselves are elected. So, here we have voters of Rustic County who elect, obviously, the three commissioners. We also have a nine-member finance committee that's elected as well. And then, department heads are elected. I put the two probably most known department heads. They're elected, the sheriff is an elected position, and the district attorney is elected. The difference with the district attorney is once he or she is elected to that office, they automatically become a state employee. So, district attorney and six assistant district attorneys that work here in Rustic County do not fall on the county payroll or on county taxes, on the state. However, the counties are responsible to fund the operation of those offices. So, the support staff, travel, training, IT, all of the things that support the district attorney's offices be funded and be paid for by the county. On the sheriff's side, sheriff appoints a chief deputy. And then, underneath that, you have three basic divisions in the sheriff's office. A law enforcement division, which is your control, deputy control. Support services and dispatchers, so transporting folks to the jail, to and from court appearances, to and from medical appointments, and to and from state prison, standardized support. And dispatch, obviously, there's the dispatchers that work, the dispatcher, the variety of local governments that contract people down to provide those services. Then the largest portion of the sheriff's office, the P.J.L. correction division, and thirty-two kind of staff. Other elected positions in county government that you might not be as aware of, registered deeds. Both, we have two registered deeds in Rustic County left because two, one in the south, one in York. Southern registry is located in Oldham. It covers right up to about Blue Sweden. And then, registered deeds in York is located in Fort Tenth. It may cover all of the St. John Valley and all the way down one sixty-one to Stockton. County treasurer, also elected position in county government. That is a part-time position. And then, the probate board is also under county government. The judge of probate is a part-time position, and the registrar of probate is an elected position as well. Everybody that works in those offices, though, are, they're hired, and they're subject to our personal policies. Then the rest of county government is appointed. I'm appointed by commissioners. And then, underneath me is the emergency management agency. You have a union resources director. You have a community services director that's specifically for the unorganized territories, because part of what county government is charged with is providing the municipal services in the U.T. That's not part of the county tax. There's a separate budget for that. But the person who is hired is capable by the U.T. is a county employee. We have a facilities director that oversees the buildings, maintenance, janitorial rounds, I'm starting to think. Finance director, IT director. And this one is a new position, is the new jail facilitator. It's going to be working to say, full-time, temporary position while we continue to explore whether or not we're going to be building a new county jail in the future. And that position will start June of one, and I'd just need probably last two or three years. I highlight the finance committee because Rustic is very unique in this regard. We're the only county in the state that publicly collects the finance committee. So, the people that serve on our finance committee, we have nine, and that's all spelled out in Rustic County Charter. We have three finance committee members who live within one of the three county commissioner districts. So, District One has three, District Two has three, and District Three has three. And their role is to obviously be really able to propose budget, make recommendations to the commissioners and myself. Of course, with the charter, I stay well. Something that is kind of unique and really important to highlight is after we have our public hearing or the budget is adopted, if the commissioners, if the finance committee takes a vote, if the commissioners wish to make any changes to the budget, it requires unanimous, I don't want to put that here, but it requires unanimous votes of the county commissioners to change anything. Then it goes back to the finance committee, and the finance committee to reject those changes by a two-thirds vote. So, there's a lot of, I don't want to say power, but the finance committee really has a lot of authority in our budget process and charter. And I think that was done by design back in the late eighties in charters, a lot of the twenty-sixty. These are your finance committee members. You'll recognize the name up there. Again, they're elected. Mike Dewes came to Fort Fairfield, and he represents Area Three within District One. I couldn't tell you all the towns in that area, but obviously, Fort Fairfield is one of them. Other towns along that corridor, I don't know. And then, Todd, Ryan, are the other two reps in Area One in District One. Sue Powers and Hamilton, Don Spiesavage and Prestow. Dick Thorne and Harrow represent District Two. Stockton, Newland, St. John Valley, Madawastle, and Shaw Lake in District Three. So, I think you can see we have a pretty broad geographic coverage. Finance committee members represent communities from the largest community down to very small township or parish. So, it's a well-veiled, I mean, it's good. So, the county tax. All the people that are parting with the county tax, why, how is it a portion? This is the state law that requires a proportion to a hate's portion, and that's completely under state valuation. And so, it's very similar to, you know, people pay school taxes. They may not have trouble in the schools. It's kind of the same, similar thing. It's based on state valuation, but that's the state law, not in the county condition. So, just to break down a simple pie chart of the different departments that I showed on that whole chart a while ago. This is how it breaks down by percentage of your county tax. So, the emergency management agency, for example, is two percent. Both the district attorney and the administration, which includes finance, HR, has six percent. Facilities, so that's all the young people, our buildings, staff, it supports those buildings, such as janitors, waiters, snipers, supervisors, that sort of thing, all the facilities. That's ten percent of the budget. The two registered deeds combined represents three percent of the budget. Probate court is two percent of the budget. Law enforcement and safety, so there's a couple things, not just the sheriff's office, but things like the fire marshal and a few other items that are under public safety. They got twenty-nine percent of the budget. You have capital program, fund, future, equipment needs, that's five percent of the budget. Legal audit, other items, two percent. And then, the largest portion is the operation of jail. So, they're five percent of the budget. So, some of the things we do, this is pretty much my area here. I appoint the district officials and employees, all subject to confirmation by the board. I ask to contract the logos on behalf of the county government. My job is to develop the county budget. I also serve as clerk and purchasing agent for all county departments. That's also specific to my charter. So, all purchasing is handled through a centralized office, and that is the commission office. And we have a duties at the center. Within our department is union resources. We have a union resources director, sports, county government employees, which recruit, personnel records, labor relations, office station, and benefits management, recon house, trade. We have a hundred and seven full-time employees. We've got Kent Holter, two part-time, and sixteen out of all employees. Others on all folks are people serving civil service papers from sheriff's office. We also maintain a fire department, not the York Excursion, and on part of the county tax, but they are specific county employees. They're funded through the government, they're part of the country. We have two unions that represent the majority of employees. Both those unions are within the sheriff's office. One represents corrections, the jail staff, the dispatchers. The other one represents the deputies' programs. Also, the administration, as I mentioned earlier, is the treasurer of the finance department. This is on the ground, I've seen statute, but the role is of the treasurer's office. As I mentioned, the treasurer's usually part-time. We have a full-time finance secretary that actually does the daily operations, got the cost of the funds, special payments, so council table, payroll, moving claims, collection taxes. The person that's responsible for developing, we report for our own audit. And the annual financial report is distributed to every town according to budget time. And then, we do administer a lot of state competitive funds, we can never receive those. So, the budget in the administration is one little over a million dollars. I just broke that down into three simple budget categories. Personnel costs, everything, salary, unemployment insurance, workers' health insurance, all the usual things that go with the budget. That's six full-time, four part-time. All four part-time are elected, so the three commissioners are there, and the attorney. Contractual items, I told you ninety-nine, nine-thirty. Lot of duties, that's like office lies, things like that. The DA, also again, is elected in four years. He's the person responsible for prosecuting criminal to Rustic County. As I mentioned earlier, there's a wide collective district attorney. We have six assistant district attorneys that are assigned to us. County government provides the office space and personnel. So, people assistants, you have the previous advocate, CEO's office, those are all county committees in our county. District attorney's budget is a little over a million dollars. So, it's a very similar budget in the size of the relationship with the administration office. Here, we have nine full-time people. That's Harrow, Prestow, and Thorne. The two district courts in the valley are in the east face. We don't have actual people there. They travel up and Harrow never was reporting to the county. Why is the contractual so much higher in relation to personnel compared to the outside? Because, like I mentioned earlier, we're not just supporting the nine county employees for contractual. We also have to provide all of the support services for those six ADAs and district attorney. So, everything from meals, travel, expedition expenses, whatever they're doing in the course of their work also supports, the budget supports the agency, and a large piece in it. Big portion of that is also IT support. All eight cross-functional districts that we manage are managed under one IT contract. So, the IT services for every unit is the same group of people. Right now, they're housed in York County. They're technically York County employees. They're trying to bring off and form their own organization. But every county has an opinion in the IT support system that the district generals office requires. Every district generals office has to have. Probate court, you know, the judge of probate, as it says, part-time, and the registrar is full-time. These are the things in probate court, that's the lawship, guardianship, conservatorship, the state's trust, the support force. The hearings are rotated throughout the county, it makes it easier for folks to get to where they need to be. So, the main office isn't located in the courthouse, but court hearings are held in Harrow and are rotating separately. And that is, you should be the only one that works there. Probate court budget is three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Personnel costs is zero, twelve, six seventy-one. Contractual is thirty-three, two thirty-nine. That includes, we only season the April for estates. Also includes, when someone passes away, they, somebody cares. The attorney has to be assigned to represent the estate in probate court. Some of the funds are used other than that. Registered deeds, again, we're the only two, we're the only county left that has two. Things that are recorded there, obviously, land records, deeds, but also, of course, decrees, survey plans, really anything that somebody wants to maintain forever. In Rustic County, there's about fourteen thousand documents that are recorded, and there are two more. I combine the budget here for the U.K. bill of two separate locations, so the total budget is six hundred and thirty-two thousand. There are two personnel costs, there's five hundred and forty of that, that's the five part-time employees. Three are open, two are the court gates. Contractual here, too, is kind of high, but eighty-four hundred of that is the software that you can use to access deeds online, where everything is going to happen, so to find. And then, office lies, the stupid stuff. Facilities, we have a facility director who oversees the staff, directing the buildings. So, grounds work, housekeeping, professional, a little security systems, we're in the middle of the pandemic. We have seven facilities that are managed by this apartment. The registry of deeds has its own building, a court gate. Sheriff's office has a satellite office there. Here in courthouse, emergency management agency building, it's very close to the courthouse. The sheriff's office building, the one in, the holding spirit, the jail, the jail garage. And again, under the unorganized territory budget, we also are responsible for the Cross Lake Fire Station, the St. Clair Fire Station, the Madawastle Lake Fire Station, and St. Clair, so you're six different. Facilities is a one point four. Six full-time and two part-time employees. Then what I've done here is I've broken down which building cost is. So, spirit court building, that's a new building. You know, your pocket, one person feeding, everything that costs to run that building on the side of personnel. Actually, the person was building two companies, sorry. Hundred seventy-seven, seven forty-four. Only building complex, that's the operational side of all of those buildings that are just in open. So, sheriff's office building, the jail, and the spirit court building, we have four full-time people that are now supervising, two maintenance workers, a custodian, who's working most, three of them. Sheriff's office building, fifty-five, four sixty-five. There the courthouse, four hundred and eight thousand. That includes the two full-time people we have there. That's where the facilities director's office is, and a full-time custodian. There we have a part-time custodian who works on the ground. And then, the registered deeds building, fifty thousand dollars, that's again, feeding, a person, selling the bills. Everything that takes around the building, we had one part-time position budget there, a custodian. And then, the jail building itself is a hundred and forty-five thousand. Again, the work that happens inside those two buildings is covered here by those folks there. IT, we have an IT director, kind of a proof position. He manages all of our infrastructure, which includes the rest of the media offices, the support desk, deeds on every department, including the software, the mission core, the deeds, probate court, the solar, dispatch computer system. Two hundred and forty-five, that will all budget there. Personal cost is eighty-three thousand, and I put one part-time, and two full-time. And the rest of that is, those are the library, network, and servers, hardware, and some, something else. EMA has a director, deputy director, planner, the financial planner. He is, he wants to incorporate all available resources, to be prepared for the swamp, the private quarters, so he likes moving things. Response, the office there, we do have a population center available. Instead of including a population, maybe he's asking for emergency access. And EMA has a portfolio of trade, both local, utilities, and others, everything he has there to disaster preparedness and, and, you know. These are some of the other gives that EMA does. Ride for agents, as they can become, human offices. Lives open generators, waiting room, through system of shelter, life string for elected officials in county departments, few officials equipped. Adding opportunities for more social, prior to the mess. That's what we do before, allowing hazardous securities, cost of. We have three hazmat teams around the county. They're there, if you need for hazardous security stores. Whether they're happy with a facility in the county, or take a truck, you hold it for when it tips over. The hazmat team is very strong. And then, lights for the large scale agencies, here again, from the regional operation center or on the site, the system. We do have a little, a little, we got, so we want, I think it's a pretty hard. EMA budget is relatively small for the work they do. It's two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, as always. But, it's a county that here, it's because of that relationship that we have with the unorganized territory. Both the EMA director and the deputy director, part of their salaries are covered by the unorganized territory budget because they serve as the fire chief, the deputy chief, or the local expired party, up in Cross Lake, at the St. Clair. And then, we have the capital budget. The county is get for the, county government is a lot of love, they're get, are up to a certain level. It's, I think, the worst of security, it's a thousand dollars or something like that. So, we have to capitalize any future purchase that we bring, that's made. This is where some of the funds go. Six hundred and eighty-eight or a thousand, that's for, people's on here, very little of that now is vehicles. I'll talk about that in a second. Stillman, that's the records management system that the sheriff's office and all the recent departments in the county use, we have the cost of that, future equipment, purchases, ability to make this, that's a, you know. The PSAP, that's a contract we have with Knobstock County. So, every landline, nine-one-one, phone call, it's made for this county, is against Knobstock. And then, we're grounded to be appropriate dispatch agents in Rustic. That's on the contract for the PSAP, it was two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Fire marshal, we fund that, eighty-five hundred dollars. And I think, separate like two hundred dollars for every design profit expenses. Every bit of that money goes back on the entire companies, for the venture, trade, and education. Our annual audit is about thirty thousand dollars. That's for all, that's for two of the three budgets, the federal, the budget, the jail budget. Enterprise fleet, so this year, the county made change. We're no longer going to buy our vehicles, so definitely to pull cars and all the vehicles that the county owns. Their internal contract with our drive, similar to the city, was small, but a few years ago. That has saved us about four hundred thousand dollars in our operating budget in this one year. And over a decade or a year, we're expecting the city about two-hundred, two million dollars by the end of that year. It really continues to show in the county tax basis. We're self-insured on most, most base revenues, on the poll, so you're pretty much only there. We do find outside agencies, so probably still a big budget, we could just load the hit apps, the A.D.'s. Pay agrees, and so on, so forth, I told you something about, we can pay. Property vehicle insurance, we are self-insured through our school. I don't know if you guys are getting the other name, risk, or you want to go off, you have to, you're not, you're not a free customer of jail, so the sixteen counties self-insured who are only through. And that's the cost of the insurance for our office, your, as long as you pay. Jail is a second budget. We have a bishop association is four thousand dollars. The Dazzy Seventy-Five is for the public employer, the fifty employees. We have to pay our health insurance, which we've got a clear payment list for association for the Dazzy Seventy-Five. And that's what we've done every year. And then, other things in there is legal, labor negotiations, advertising, and employee reputation. About forty-five dollars for employee, for five years' service. So, not all county taxes are on your county budget. There is definitely, that does come in, although a very small portion of what we like to see. Biggest portion of our non-property tax revenue is community corrections. Biggest portion of our non-property tax revenue is community corrections funding, that's the money that comes in to support the jail, uh, so one point four million dollars. Statewide, the state fund is about forty percent of the total cost to accompany the jail, we're worried about that as well, it's been a little better, but the number of big needs, estimated we've lost over the last couple of years, and so we've lost a significant amount of funding for the jail support. EMA revenue, this is money that comes in from FEMA, FEMA support, uh, EMA operations in the other county, that's a hundred and thirty K. We're not allowed to charge rent for the superior court spaces, and we hope we're there, that's state law, but we are allowed to charge for district courts, states. And so we have five district courts in the interstate county, two of them are in our buildings, one in the whole city, one within, the other press guy is there, all the facilities, state owns that facility, so we, we have, there's early, two up in the valley now, five in the, they're, they're participating in those private, we're just trying to see. For the spaces that we do rent, uh, in our buildings, it's a hundred and twenty. Deeds and probate, legal revenue, uh, the time we quoted this rule, it was cost of that, all pulls up about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we use that to just simply reduce the tax minimum. Main drug enforcement agency, we have three agents, the big one sheriff's office, that are sponsored by the EMA, and then you versus a hundred percent of that cost, so this fiscal year, that comes up to three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Do contract, our dispatching up to fourteen local communities, for police, for fire ambulance mostly, we do have a lot of degrees that we dispatch for, for, uh, for police service, for police department, that's always under the city process revenue, and district training has some parts of these, that all comes out of every, every part. Because we are the administrative school, the unorganized territory, we are allowed to charge, we see five percent of their budget, so that's the hundred and forty-five paid there that comes back to the county to offset the back office savings that we do for, we use the pay money, pay bills, all of that stuff, um, adds up. And then, uh, we're one of two counties that have negotiated a contract from the unorganized territory with the county commissioners, provide deputy patrol. So we actually, the unorganized territory actually pays for one full-time, two full-time deputy, and costs associated with that deputy, including the vehicle, the gas, the oil, all that, agents that goes with the, the rubber, the car, and that's a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, that comes back to the county, as revenue. And then copier, the interest rate on the summer, it's a little lower, obviously, but as the infrastructure gets deployed, and our assistance is a little better, that just comes up, maybe five thousand dollars, this thing is going to be. American Rescue Plan Act, very proud of what we do with these funds, we receive about thirteen million dollars over the twenty-one, twenty-two year, and our county did something very neat, I think, early on, officially behind your eyes, that these funds were really meant to be local, underground, local projects, cashing, having, obviously, a lot of things that here are named, welcome to our industry, so we thought it was always fair, to program to assist municipalities and nonprofits in the county, so we took our thirteen million, we divided it in half, we took the six and a half million, we put out there for proposals, and we, we awarded, uh, sort of six million, seventy thousand dollars to twenty-one different towns, cause on municipal entities, and one hundred and twenty-five nonprofits. Here in fourth, uh, the two district, we received one of those grants, six hundred thousand dollars for infrastructure agreement, for wastewater pumps and shepade, that leveraged initially one point eight million dollars. We're really proud to say that the thirteen million total leveraged, uh, almost thirty million dollars in the whole state, federal funds for all of the projects that happened over the last couple of years. They're already in the final, uh, year of that project, the funds haven't been promoted, now we just, last year projects, and that we completed all of it. So the sheriff's office is, again, uh, the largest department we have, when we combine with the jail, uh, has full twenty-four time staff, uh, in the law enforcement control. They handle over thirteen thousand calls for service last year, and have direct coverage of forty-eight hours, and notifications, and a hundred and twelve other municipalities. Obviously, uh, hundreds of those have nobody living in, uh, twelve U.P. Uh, we also provide the backup and assistance to several local police departments, support recovery, safety, support systems, when we need to be stressed. Corrections division, uh, we have thirty-two full-time staff there, four part-time, twenty-four center, three sixty-five operation, never closes. We're licensed to house a hundred and seventeen inmates, the building is designed to house sixty-six. So we've been getting by for a long time, with the waiver from the state, by basically putting buckets in the door of doors, housing inmates. Twelve elements, it's just a light, uh, jail is booked, we make two hundreds, it's had a modification in nineteen fifty's, like the last bit of work that was done there was in the mid nineteen fifties. So it is why we are now looking at whether our future's a work on project. Transport and dispatch, a little full-time staff, almost all of them are dispatch, and again, we provide, uh, communication services to the sheriff's office, one local police department, four agencies, and fourteen other fire departments, which is new house, including the parks. So how much is law enforcement at the full? It's a four point seven million dollar budget, that does not include that EMA contract, that we should, uh, keep stocks of agency, agents, we pay out, we give the first one in a year. So personnel costs is four point two million, contractual four fifty-five, and bodies is fifty-five. Jail is the largest, six point three million dollar budget, which is thirty-two full-time, four part-time. Other things in that budget that you may not be aware of is we require to provide all medical care for units near our custody. We have a contract for our service, that now is at one point one million dollars. When I started doing years ago, that contract was two hundred and fifty thousand. So you can see how things have really escalated over the last eight years. I, I will mention though, that that also includes any prescriptions, uh, any personal care, but it includes anything that happens outside the jail, anybody that's brought to the hospital for their service, contract by design. Uh, we also have to provide meals for inmates, obviously, that's a contract we have with an outside vendor now, similar to like an airbar, you might be feeling it at the college. The one that we have is called trade and food services, we have specifically moved into transformation settings, we have that special place to provide that service. That might seem like a big number, but when we take the total number of inmates, divided by three meals a day, nearest study is the, that looks out to about four hours, and twenty-five sets per meal. So how we go, out of date, uh, we don't need to lost or, yeah, we're not going to. Three hundred and five thousand for a contractual at the jail, that's, is the trade store, liability insurance, again, that's budget for the jail, for the general shorts. Forty-five commodities, that's kitchen, office, supplies, uniforms, and clothing for prisoners. And then we started a capital, uh, outlay for boarding prisoners, um, and this is the second unit, but that, the reason we did that was, two years ago, we found ourselves in a situation where we just didn't have that room, uh, we can only house, we had tax, and we're licensed to one seventeen, more than one twenty-five, we can't do. So we had enough of, I think, a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty inmates, uh, a couple of years ago, we had to board those prisoners out to other cities, in the, uh, and we spent about seven thousand dollars, just to that six point three, eight million cost. So we decided to sell these, a million, a piece, I would have these again. How much of the budget is actually for labor patrol? This is a question I get asked a lot, in communities that actually have their own police department, like yours, so I try to really break it down, so we can see what percentage of your county taxes is included in that part of the sheriff's office studies, the four two, four, and the, the bill. Mages are about one point five million, overtime cost one twenty-six, health insurance, five million, retire, what you call, other insurance, it's close up to two twenty-four, the expense of those vehicles running is around where you want, the other full cost, thirty thousand damage, so about two point seven million on our total county budget is the labor patrol portion, which is about fifteen percent of our county budget. So I, that's a health chief, I'm on this here, and I just, I wanna make it very clear on this slide here, when I'm saying services from the sheriff's office, this is all cooperation and the county, like we're, we do a block therapy. We cannot do the work, we do it alone, we neither do the work with this department, because of the reciprocity, and all of these police departments, and we really all do work together, because there are enough people wearing badges in this county to do the work that's, so we're, we're back there out in front of the seven. By twenty twenty-three, we did have a hundred and thirty-seven missing cars, that's everything from fifty-seven traffic stops, our deputy lawyer from town was stopping somebody to do something, forty-five agency assists, I assume some of that is, uh, for the local PD, there'll also be other agencies that are cool in town, EMA's for some reason, nine citizen assists, that could be waiting, stopping for somebody with a flat tire, that they could have. Uh, six trespass, walk investments, three units of possession, so that's like service for the concierge, or somebody, and nine, and then you see here what's happening, is your police department has, uh, has continued to, uh, to leave out from a few years ago, remember, this time is here, it's really drawn, and we'd like to see that number. If I was a national tonight in this presentation, I'd really flip the night, uh, because there is a situation that we've got, the field department. First month, if Dan York closed their police department, we would have five hundred fires in that first month. So, again, they get our, our risk, uh, quite a lot. Eighty, decent hours, twenty-four, with another traffic stop down, agency assist down, eleven schools, it's, wow, it's, it's really impressive, they tell me that one of our inmates is very good school teacher at the force.
That's a London coffee drop off.
But I don't, I, I don't have a problem with that, because if you stop it on his brain for his lunch hour, like, if it was like a uniform, uh, that's a, that's a positive direction for kids in their school, and I think anytime we can have, we want, or something in our schools in a positive setting, I think that's all good, so, I think that's great. Four is a possession, and twenty-four, twenty-one, and nineteen hundred plus. So average, one hundred and eight calls, and I, I'm sure that's something you can do as well. I just put a dollar value on here, just for discussion purposes, so we do see that there is some, uh, return, and, I don't know, I, well, I can take two minutes, or I can take three hours, you know, there's no real way I can give you a hard number here, so it's just straight division math, twenty-two billion, seven hundred thousand is the multiple budget divided by the total number of calls, averages out to, you don't have to call, um, that's an expensive coffee drop, it's, it's already that clear, it's not real numbers, it's just average. So about twenty-one thousand is being in the service. The means to get I to know is the jail, and this is where you're gonna see some, some major numbers. As I mentioned, like I said, it was license for a hundred and seventeen, right now, our population has been focusing at right around a hundred, a hundred and forty every morning, and it's, oh, three, seven, one oh eight, all depends on what's happening, and what gave it uses. But averages right around a hundred, right? Twenty twenty-four, there was fifty-three individuals from Port Fairfield, who spent four, like nineteen hundred and seventy-nine, bed fees, bed nights, eighty percent. Uh, that's the cost impact on that, see, everybody here, divided by the number of units we have, plus sixty-three thousand dollars a year to housing and for hiring a day. That might seem like a high number, but I'm really happy to tell you that that's about ten to fifteen thousand dollars more, than anywhere else in the city. I can back that up here and there. Take your nineteen hundred and seventy, seventy-nine bed fees for Port Fairfield residents, divided by the three sixty-five, that works out to about five point four individuals, yeah, you didn't have five people there all the year, right? About fifty-three people, play it out to, uh, five point four. Multiply that by the cost of operating that, is three hundred and forty-one thousand. Divide that into six point three million, about five point four percent of the jail budget is attributed to Port Fairfield and persecution. Your tax is four hundred and fifty thousand and five, which is about three percent of the current county taxes. So, a little bit of some, uh, when it comes to your, uh, the persecution rates versus your share of county tax. Mentioned earlier, fifteen percent of our labor patrol budget is, uh, fifty percent of our budget is labor patrol, so if you're four fifty, about sixty-seven thousand dollars would then secure the labor patrol. I subtract out the policy service, and then these two things are something new that I added in, and I've been thinking about it, I've done this presentation now, of several times, to the communities, um, this is a new one that I, I should have included earlier in other places, but glad to be here tonight. I mentioned that still been earlier, have any people been in council since two thousand and fifteen? So back in that country, the former sheriff, uh, had approached us about, uh, putting in a new records management system for sheriff's office, it's called SP. Obviously, we've had it at the time, it's a really extensive administration system, and I can tell you what we had before, uh, what we all had before, um, and, you know, we didn't have. What's nice about Stillman is, I've accessed all of the data of your system, not anybody else that's given the system, uh, that has, has the system system, so, if Port Fairfield, if someone over, today, we have a transaction with that person, and it's not in the system, two days later, one of our deputies pulls that single person over, and still, it shows up, there would be no way to know that, I would be able to see it again. So anyway, sheriff came to us, wanted to buy this, it was a good price, and it was about, I think, five or six hundred thousand dollars. And it's, you know, it'd be really nice, we could all be on the same system. So, I said, well, Sean, if you wanna make that pitch, you better get the towels to support that, because everyone's a, a little bit paid for. And so did, and so, it was county commissioner, we got open, we had three or four police chiefs, and three or four county managers there, uh, basically said, we'll buy into that. County bought, paid for, handled, and every local police department has, so now the sheriff's office, the same place, and every local PD has stayed in there, in their crews, I think it's a great, great one. Port Fairfield shared that, annual costs is twenty-two, two-three. We are coming up for a renewal in another year or two, we don't have an answer at this point, what I see in the reply, I think that number's gonna drop to all of us, because it's just essentially a renewal, we don't have to buy again, we have the old software back, so, we'll find out, that'll be a hundred in six months. And then, as I mentioned earlier, PSAP, uh, calls are handled by Knopstop County, we pay the contract for that, uh, we have three point seven eight percent, I think we had about a hundred and thirty-nine-one ones on land. So I think somebody from their home, still using the landline, the nine-one-one, was answered by, operated that contract, that's why he drives, uh, forward, our contracts. So we, we do step down, your, your net portion of, uh, labor patrol is down to around fifteen thousand, one hundred and dollars, and you add in the cost of, of jail's cost for flip there, the remaining is a three forty-one, we need to get cost, and we need a few point five. So then I just take your tax, and I subtract the three point five, and there's your remaining county tax, one point five, and then I just take the percentages of departments from that pie chart of all of them, and that kind of gives you an illustration of how much of your county tax balance is going to support, how the departments will be helping. But it's about a three million of eight thousand, twenty million. Well, I said a lot of times, but I think we're really that interested, UT is a separate budget, uh, we develop, uh, it's approved by the county, it's approved by the final street, and it goes to state, the state approves it, so actually, we'll, nothing, we'll just say the bill, so go it over in the tax agency, we, uh, we don't really need it to provide municipal services, uh, so things like, it's so renewable, fire protection, I wouldn't tell you the contracts yet, they're all over. We tried really hard to contract with this county, for joining us, or, there is one of the unions that provide a new service for us, or, uh, seller union, they'll contract this county, because they're ready now. But a lot of places in the county, we still have that access, so we have to go, go pay you, and, and, services. Uh, P two budget is three million dollars, um, one, we have full-time, we, and as of the sharing of, uh, the cost for the major records, and every one full-time clerk, maybe a full-time, we see, it would be an office department, and, and, of course. Again, the deputy, show the contract, actually, on the same one, we, county gets out, we're coming by that, we're just, we, the fire department, I think, or flights, is a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, there's seven hundred and fifty thousand in capital, that's the goals, projects, firing department, there's, ten other towns, they're friends, I use the seeds. Their property insurance, they're all best, because we don't have that much up there, maybe seven towers, and, and, these are just the townships that we actually provide those services here, and they'll say, a hundred and twelve townships, but obviously, we're not providing services in, 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 places where there are residences, where there are roads, and where there are roads. All of the townships, that is including all of your All of the townships, that is including all of York West and the rest of the townships all of it. They're kind of down to the status, probably. Part of that is actually the endless coverage and what we probably have, the longer that service, the reputation assets are there. And contact that, we actually provide the service. And the 210,000 in reserve or actually not reserved, the maintenance of the units, some heating projects. And some of those, some of just going to the recognition for students, the ability to be at UT. Wolf Lake Fire, Dan and I kind of know that there's 45 our call folks up there that provide fire protection for possibly a safe play or squarely, and if it's on westbound, provide fire protection for that. Looking ahead, right now, we're at a county, a county regional summit, the work of the city of Prestalia. It was a very quest. You will all be getting invitation to that. But the idea here is to bring local and county government, both open and elected officials to a summit held in September. It's not about how many counties and how many county communities work together. Are there services that the people need? Are there services that we should stay out of? Are there services that we should be more involved in? So that's going to be the biggest information here at the public right now. We have some folks, some guest speakers coming up that have actually gotten involved in other places that have been lobbying county and community resources. I mentioned the ARPA goes out, the last year, pleasing that out. Jail study mission, the new jail, that is right now, we're, I was including phase one. We had a presentation today, we're considering the feasibility study. Some things will be hired, so we know approximately the size of the jail that we need. Now the next stage is we can see look at architectural design, the national pricing. Still a couple of years out, but it's still process, but it's infection. Hope you're in task force, like also serves on that. Basically, that will there provide recommendations for the states that are feeling fun to be received, be able to set with, or really running around and funding five agencies in the city. Tackling this, this huge sort of situation. And then as of the story, the official is going to be reporting a side of the process and picking up every day of the county charter. Charter is now 47 years old, hasn't been looked at in a long time. So it's quite a process as well, if you go through that here. They're going to execute order January, if we're ready, go to secure state's office, credit mission, there's not a good effort, six selected, three qualified partnerships. We're going to study next year. We'll be a county charter, we'll be up to reach. Can I see my contact? He's probably questions.
Can you email that? I couldn't see.
Oh, sure. Actually, thank you.
I guess.
Very, very well sold on your part, let Fort Fairfield's taken from you.
Any questions?
Good presentation.
All right, I appreciate your time.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks.
Good seeing you all.
So we just need a motion to adjourn now?
Yeah.
Okay, any others for public comment period? Okay. To the floor, Aaron.
All right. Licenses and permits. And somebody's gone here, Tony, we did hold a public meeting. No one showed up for licenses and permits meeting as usual. But we do have the list to approve a little later. The agenda somewhere down there. Yeah, yeah. On your business. Any questions on licensing permits? So May financial statements, we did include a copy of that. Cash balance for the end of the month of May was 1.27 million. And looking at revenue sharing, we're estimating going into the new year with around 900,000 in checking and savings account. Reviewing expenses with Dan, I did get a chance to sit with him last week. We are looking at end of the year with about $750,000 surplus. Departments are staying within their budgets. We do have an extra pay period this year. We're getting it in on the FY '25 year, which is good because we do have that surplus this PD is a little skewed, but we'll be getting reimbursement from the state, it's just a matter of waiting for that, for that to be paid. And parks in Ragged Doug was playing a person a couple basketball hoops, just because the old ones were really deteriorating. But again, his expenses are under budget. It's not going to be a big problem to do that. We'll be taking that from the reserves left. Which does show I use an over budget, but again, still, still well in that. Two more weeks left in the fiscal year, not foreseeing any major issues. I have been trying to pour through everything and make sure I have as good understanding as handed, but not seeing anything concerning me at this point. Any question about the FY '25 budget? I see. Mr. Justine, there. Mr. Justine is going to give us an update on the aristocratic way solutions.
Evening, councilors. Our last meeting was on May 23rd. Our budget was ahead of schedule by 50% for the month and was set at year-to-date of 14% above budget, although our expenses were 21% higher than what we would have liked them to be, but year-to-date were at around 6.8%. So we're still pretty good shape from the flow. We decided to create an operations manager position off of the landfill, which is really kind of an assistant to Mark as we're transitioning, we're not going to, we're retiring in the future. So we posted that and we hired our new person in there. They're going to be required to get some regulatory requirements, they need the licensing help of the landfill, but that seems to be going pretty well. We did have that in our budget for this after the year, but really, we're not going to pay the full cost of the operation to each person until they actually receive their certifications. So we feel pretty comfortable, we have enough in our budget to cover that. The Prescott landfill cover project, separate cover project, actually started work yesterday, so that's going as progress as it's supposed to be going. And we started using Cell Five for the first time at the beginning of June. So that's got a left expectancy of 10 to 15 years. So we're pretty shook there. The other thing we offer yearly is especially with the win we've had in the last month or so, a lot of the plastic in the landfill goes around, plastic bags. And we'll offer to charity with organizations, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, or church groups. We pay $10 an hour per person to come in and just pick up the bags. They're pretty well asked to bring their own supervisors for that. Yet not in area where it's literally, we're messing with very stuff, it's just dry bags at home, usually against the litter fence. So Mark is asked to figure those eight groups that want to do that, they go up to come in, they can be from two to nine to, they just pay 10 bucks for it and get them to pick stuff up for us. It's a good way to fundraise, a position also to fundraise. Any questions? I'm really into it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
The quality of place council has scheduled a community barbecue to welcome the new town manager and his wife, which would be myself. And it's going to be at the VFW on July 30th at 5:30. Very honored that they're putting this together, really appreciate it. Looking forward to the opportunity to meet people and get to know our neighbors. Very excited about that.
They could have done a parade float there for you guys there for the, I think the Boston Festival.
I think this is plenty. The Northern Maine Development Commission, am I saying that right? Yes. Northern Maine Development Commission is holding their annual meeting on June 26th at the Best Western Fair Boot, 1145. Councillor Canavan and myself are invited as representatives for Fort Fairfield. I do plan on attending, not sure if you are going to.
I will.
Excellent. Again, this is another opportunity for me to get out there and meet peers from around the county, but also to meet the staff and explore, think a lot of theories about Fort Fairfield. Solar project updates. Four projects in the works, thought it would make sense to do a report out each meeting, especially where the council has talked about my focus on economic development. So talk about the four of them. We have number one, TiVo project is built, but it is yet to go online. Working with a developer to get the necessary forms to make sure that the town receives reimbursement from the state for their, for their tax break. Want to say that's the BBTV betty before they open and then I cannot remember the name of the other one after they open. But we're working with them to make sure that we're working conjunction with them to make sure that we get the credit that we deserve. The Maple Road project has conditional approval for the, from the planning board, but waiting on the decommissioning plan. The state has given the additional approval for that decommissioning plan. Once the state provides final approval, then we'll issue a permit for that project and that will look forward. Car and sale project is on hold at this point, and the landowner is contemplating not renewing the lease agreement, letting that lapse. I do plan on reaching out to them, seeing if we can continue to move that forward. I guess 25% of that non-land project, so we'd like to see that continue. And I'll make sure I update the council on that. And the last one, the TMG project will be discussed at the planning board leading on the April 4th. I will be there. Board members have received the application and the chair reached out with a few questions. The developer is preparing responses to those questions and also plans to have a representative at the meeting to answer anything, any other questions that the board may have. So three out of the four here to be moving forward, that's good. And we'll see if we can get that fourth one, keep that one in the works. Any questions? SAD 20 referendum. Our clerk is going to read her memo regarding the SAD 20 referendum.
So this is in the commission, MSAD 20 held the referendum election on June 10th, 2025 for article number one, which is giving favor authorizing the school board to issue bonds or notes in the name of main school administrative district number 20 for minor capital projects in the amount not to, not to exceed $600,000 to replace boilers, including the fuel delivery system and certain leaders at the Fort Fairfield Middle High School. The article passed with 50 yes votes and six no votes. Those are your words.
Election and alphabet, I think due to his leader.
That's the first time I've seen that.
Excellent. We received a request from Councillor Canavan to discuss blighted properties. So I am willing to check over to Councillor Canavan to start that discussion.
Okay. I've had a town resident come in and ask about the status. She knows that letters have been sent out requesting cleanup and changes and some of the blighted properties around town. She currently lives next to one of them and really has struggled, and I really feel bad for her. She's struggled a lot with rodents and vermin and just total lack of understanding on the neighbors who rent the property. I don't know where we go with it, but I didn't want this issue because it's been addressed. We've sent out letters. I know Tony was involved with it. I know Tim Goff was. I want to see something else happen. I know there's zoning ordinances around some of this stuff, but where are we at with it? So I told her I'd get back to her. I don't want it, I don't want it to drop.
Is it okay to give an update, do the research, when we get back to you with, or get back to the council at the next council meeting?
I would love that. I'd like to be able to give her some, something more than, I don't know, I'll bring it up at the council meeting.
Yep.
Do you have a list of the ones you're concerned about? I don't know where they sent the letters up to, but I'm sure that somebody does.
We can compile a list and show what progress we made or lack of progress and explain what our next steps are like.
Because I think there were two letters sent, right?
I do not have. Yes. That's what being told, yes.
Yes.
So, yeah, we will update on that.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, go, go right ahead. Go right ahead.
So we are talking about the FY '25, '26 budget. At this time, the budget does show an increase of $56,363 real estate taxes, which represents 1.3% increase over the amount raised in current year. The one cost that we do not have a firm commitment on is from our insurance, workers' comp, casualty, and livelihood. I did have an opportunity to speak briefly with our insurer yesterday, and those numbers are very favorable. It's looking like, without, I need within next week, but right now, it's looking like we're going to be $47,700 to the better, which really makes up a lion's share of that increase. I will drop that back down. So it's going to look, if everything comes through the way that our conversation went yesterday, puts about $8,600 increase on the budget this year, which is much more attractive. I have to give United credit based on the conversation I had with them yesterday, they really pushed hard to get us down to that number. There was really difficult circumstances that they were working with. So I appreciate their efforts and how you, certainly, once I get the final numbers and confirm those and they're locked in, I'll show up.
Very, very good.
All right, want to talk about a tax anticipation note. We did receive.
Do we have any?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to.
Oh, oh, yeah. Come down in the news this far?
No, we won't.
Thank you very much.
Make a motion to approve the budget is presented.
Second.
Any discussions? We know we've discussed this budget a lot, but.
For months.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Now I'll move on to tax anticipation note. So we did receive a bid from Katana Trust for a tax anticipation note for the year. We're looking at a 12-month loan for a million dollars. Couple different options that they put on the table for us. One was a fixed rate of 4.38%. The second is a variable rate, which is prime plus zero, currently at 7.5%. They do have a four on that of 7%. The variable rate does give us the opportunity to borrow, pay back, and borrow it again. It's more like a revolving loan. But we didn't use it that way. We haven't used it that way in the past. Last year, we borrowed 600,000 for about four months. We paid it all and didn't need to borrow anymore. I don't recommend that we, that we go with that variable rate. I recommend we go with the fixed rate at the lower 4.38% interest and use that to blow this until our real estate revenues start coming in.
Entertained a motion for Aaron's recommendation.
Make a motion to approve with the town, air, town manager recommendations.
Okay, motion? Second, any discussion? I don't see interest rates dropping down to that, so, so, yeah. All those in favor? Aye. You got her. Doing a, doing a heck of a job here, Aaron.
All right, thanks. Puddle dock facility discussion. Just as a little background, the puddle dock facility was developed in the early 80s as a community recreation center. It was financed through some grants from the main archivage, cultural conservation, conservation and forestry. Unfortunately, we really have underutilized that facility for the past 20 to 30 years. It's been used by a variety of entities as a childcare center. And I say unfortunately, but we need childcare, so that's been a good thing. In between towns, it did sit vacant and never really found long-term productive use for that park, that area. Currently, April Stickney has a lease with the town and runs Sunshine Learning Center. The demand for her services far exceed her capacity in that, in that existing building. She has talked to us about expanding the building, but doesn't want to make the investment unless she, she owns the facility. The area is in high demand. There are scarce opportunities, and we have not really come up with a great use otherwise. So I would recommend to the council that we start investigating what the process would look like to determine value of the facility. It is assessed at $84,610 and come up with a plan that's in the best interest for the county and for being able to make that, that kind of investment. I do want to point out that the main DACF does have a clawback provision on that grant, even though it was so long ago. But it really looks like the proceeds, proceeds from the sale of the facility just needs to be used in another recreational investment within the town. And we do have some, some stuff going on. Doug has a pending project to upgrade the tennis and basketball courts, and he's also has a project to upgrade the boat landing out at Monse Pond. Both of those would qualify for that, we believe, but we do have to do a little more research and make sure that we have everything lined up so that that would work if, if the council did decide to sell that to April Stickney. Questions?
So the point and the process you're at is trying to determine the market value?
Well, that's, that's part of what staff would take a look at it and see whether it would be the assessed value, whether it be a market value, sale, that type of thing. If it went for a lower assessed value, potentially you could look at making sure that her intention wasn't to buy and flip it, make a profit on it because that meets the purpose. So having something like that built into it. I guess at this point, we just wanted to, to have permission to explore our options.
I looked into it a little bit, just very preliminary market analysis. The market value is going to be substantially more than what the assessed value shows, so I think we should definitely look into that to determine the value on its own for residential. So as a residential property, it would be worth more.
Yeah, and we would present that to the council with consideration.
Is that because it's waterfront?
That's part of it, yeah.
Mr. Foster having me reach out to Doug back even is one of the higher offset land water conservation fund. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring to everybody's attention, and I'll have a more in-depth conversation with you later. One of the bigger things that I found out is we can sell it, it's going to be a lot harder than we thought. One of the stipulations is it does have to go back to a recreational project, a board project. However, it can be a current project, it can be a current park. We would have to purchase new land and build a park. So it's sounding like it's, in the end, it may cost us more money in the long run.
It can.
There's a lot more to it that, that we can have a conversation with, about that.
Can it be a new park on property we already own?
It can.
Wow.
Yeah, it's interesting, and there's some other things that we do can talk about before we break it.
Yeah, we would, we would present all those details, make sure that there's a clarity on that decision.
It's complicated.
It sounds like we're going to articulate to the gray areas.
Some of them.
But you'll be good for her when you're doing it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Second.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right, the planning board received the resignation of board member Mark Lloyd on June 5th. His term did not expire until 2027. He just felt that it would leave the current workload. Additionally, board member Rick Shepherd's term does expire on June 30th of this year. The town sent out a request for applications to fill the vacant positions. We did get two residents interested in, in serving on the planning board, Steve Rjeski and Larry Gardner. Mr. Shepherd did not reapply for his position on the board. So staff is recommending, this is a long one, but recommends that the council approves Chris Campbell, who's currently an alternate on the planning board, move him from that position to a regular planning board member immediately, as we do have a vacancy, as well as appointing Steve Rjeski and Larry Gardner as alternate planning board members. We have two alternate positions, and they will fill both those. With this council approval, Mr. Rjeski will automatically move to a regular planning board member upon the expiration of Mr. Shepherd's term on July 1st. It's kind of a multi-faceted.
I'd entertain a motion to accept the recommendations.
Can I make a clarification first? I hate to do this, but I feel it must be done. Mark Lloyd is a regular. His term isn't done until 2027. Rick Shepherd is a regular. His term is done in 2025. If you take the one alternate we have, and there's a vacancy in that position, and move them into a regular, you still have to fill one of the regulars. So there should be some consideration of the two alternates. Do you have to fill in the other vacancy and then establish them as an alternate for the remainder of the term, for any term?
I think that's what you just said.
Yeah. I did, I thought you said.
With council approval, Mr. Rjeski will automatically move to the regular.
Oh, I missed that part. I probably could have gone to the alternate. Lyrical. I'm sorry.
Thanks for that clarification.
Appreciate it.
I'd entertain a motion for, for the recommendations.
Make a motion, the, was recommended, recommended by the town manager.
Okay, motion? Second, okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
unofficial appointments. Every year, the council has to approve these appointments, and did send you a memo previously about the code enforcement, the change in code enforcement, plumbing inspector Mike Jelbert working, will be working closely with Tony over the next year to obtain certifications and become accustomed to his new responsibilities. I did have the opportunity to sit my first three days, sit with both Mike and Tony, and I'm confident that this is a good move for the town of Fort Fairfield, that Mike is very capable and Tony has committed to sharing all his knowledge, that he is literally a bulk of knowledge with his, his historical experience here. Being able to share that with Mike is really a resource that not every, every community has, so we're happy to have that. We are asking for approval to reappoint Darren Anson as road commissioner and public works director. Fire chief Mike Jelbert as EMS director, emergency management director, health officer, code enforcement officer, and plumbing inspector. He's up to it. Assistant fire EMS chief Daniel Gehig in the second as assistant EMS director, assistant emergency management director, assistant health officer, assistant code enforcement officer, and assistant plumbing inspector. Richard Lebeck Jr. as tax assessor, assistant code enforcement officer, and assistant plumbing inspector. Police chief Matthew Cummings as police chief, assistant town manager, and animal patrol officer. Lastly, Trudy O'Neil as vital records sub registrar.
Entertained a motion for the recommendations?
I move that we reappoint everybody on that list I just said.
Motion? Second, any further discussion?
I do.
Yeah.
It's clarification, more or less. Mike's move, you're going to be doing code enforcement, plumbing inspector should, would need to be assistant until he gets his certifications?
No, he has the right to become the CEO as long as he gets his, he can stock right from the date, oh, he has to get his certifications in 12 months. Okay. So we're, we're already helping to try and make sure that he takes all those.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, motion is second, so go to vote. All those in favor? Aye.
All right, so now I'm confused because I thought we were approving the tan down here. What direction am I going? We, we already approved this tan, so we have to approve an order?
Yes.
Okay. So am I reading it for approval again? That's the right process here? Okay, so I'll read it again. No? Okay, excellent. Voted that under and pursuant to title 30A, section 5771 of the main revised statutes as amended and supplemented, there be and hereby is au, hereby is authorized the issuance of up to $1 million principal amount of tax anticipation notes of the town in anticipation of the receipt of taxes for the in this whole fiscal period beginning July 1st, 2025, ending June 30th, 2026. Said note shall be dated July 1st, 2025, and shall mature on June 30th, 2026, shall be signed by the town manager and countersigned by the chairman of the town council, shall bear interest at a rate of 4.38% per annum, shall be payable at Katana Trust Company and otherwise be in such form and bear such details as the signers may determine. That said note is hereby sold and awarded to Katana Trust Company. Said note is hereby designated a qualified tax exempt obligation of the town of Fort Fairfield for the 2025 county year pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code of 1986. That all things here to fore done and all action here to fore taken by the town and its municipal officers and agents in the authorization of said note are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed, and the town manager and chairman are each hereby authorized to take any and all action necessary inconvenient to carry out the provisions of this voting, including delivering said note against pain of their full.
Nice work. Okay. Entertained a motion to, for the tax anticipation note.
Improve it, Israel.
Okay, motion. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? Is just three of us have to sign, or do all five of us have to sign?
That's what makes sense now. All right. Speak briefly about Felsham Company's contract for the annual audit. We've, we've used Felsham in the past. We have attached, are attaching contract from Felsham Company to conduct the next annual audit for the fiscal year 24, 25 year. The services being provided is consistent with our prior years. We have experience with Felsham. The contract is 12,500, which is consistent with our budget, and I recommend that you approve us utilizing their services for the audit.
Entertained a motion for Aaron's recommendation?
I move we utilize Felsham Company for the annual audit.
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
All right, we talked about having a public meeting about the licenses and permits. We included a list in your packet. Would you like me to read down through all of them?
No, we can read, we can read.
So I need a vote to approve the list of permits and licenses.
I move we approve this list of licenses and permits.
Motion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Need to approve the town council monthly meeting minutes from Wednesday, May 21st, 2025.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Motion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
And then we have two warrants, which I believe we already received signatures needed for them. Warrant number 22 for $204,580.63. Warrant number 23 for $398,858.30.
Entertained a motion to approve those warrants?
So. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any other other?
I did want to let the council know that we are planning to close town hall on June 30th for our end of year work. We have a lot of new staff. It's going to be a little bit more of a pass than it has been for the past, but I feel that that would be appropriate to close the office.
I'll speak, I'll speak on behalf of the council, but we think you're the right guy for the job. To handle on June 30th.
Just looking at staff going, good job. No, very capable, I, I already talked through with them. I believe they can handle it. One more thing, I just would like to personally and for the town of Fort Fairfield, thank Dan Foster for his efforts to keep everything running smoothly on the interim between Mr. Goff, me, and myself starting and for the amount of time that he spent keeping me in the loop, keeping me impressed of what was going on and training me and preparing me to be able to step into council meeting on day three. So thank you very much, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
He always loved when people clap for him.
And last public comment period?
Quite good, three, three things. Welcome, Aaron, and good luck. Dan, thank you very much for all you did. And if we could, it seems like every time we have a meeting, that's running. Is there a way to reprogram that or do something? We tried to shut it off, because I could see you struggling, but. My hearing isn't as good as it used to be, but I appreciate that.
Tom, you, Tom, you, you know, you know this building better than I do.
Well, there are controls in that office over there. We can handle everything on that side of the building.
Yeah.
From Doug's office, but I don't think we have control with this, this side. But thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. I'd entertain one more motion, if anybody else doesn't have anything.
I'll move you to Aaron. I second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Aaron. Nice work. Nice work.
For three, three days on, you did great.
Maybe a few for the third day.
Yeah.
Well. We had to run it all the, almost.